Have an invocation and Pledge of Allegiance, so please all rise.
Let us pray. Dear God, during this March month and coming spring, we thank you for the rebirth of fresh beauty in our mountains. We thank you for our loved ones, and particularly our families. Grant us your grace, Lord God, as this council makes decisions that affect those who live, work, and visit in this town, and we ask all these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Kind of exciting out there. There's four, four college teams out on the lake today. University of Vermont, Bryn Mawr, Columbia, and one other. So it's fun seeing them. Who is it?
UCF, New Central Florida.
Okay, okay, and it's, it's great. I think North Carolina comes in next week. They always come in the first week of the NCAA. Double NCAA, so it's fun. It's exciting to see all the kids here. Little noise on the lake is fun this time of the year. Okay, item number four, approval of the agenda. I know we have a number of changes that we would like to make. John, you want to?
Yes, let's take item B out of consent, consent agenda, and move it to the first item under new business.
Okay. That's the, the firehouse thing, Ron Morgan thing. Okay, you had a change too? You wanted to add under new business? I don't know how we do it.
Under new business, it would just be if, if the council wants to discuss the, the question from the LAB that I will address in my report.
I'll just say a discussion, just question and discussion.
During, about tour boats.
About tour boats. Okay.
Where are we putting them?
Well, it's going to be either A or B under 10. Okay. I'll, I'll do one or the other. The other thing that Chris and I talked about is that we'd like to move item number, it's current number, item A, sewer rate presentation down just before D, because the two of them are related. So what I'll do is we'll move A down just before D. I don't know, I guess we'll call that D1, and the current D, call D2. Okay, is that okay with everybody?
Sure.
Okay, any other changes? With that amendment, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion with the changes in the script.
Motion made by Bob.
Second.
Second by Stephen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's anonymous. Okay. Moving on to... What did we do?
Did we delete the second one under closed session?
We could delete that.
Yeah.
Oh.
The property acquisition under closed session.
Okay, I'm sorry. That's good. Okay, so we'll include that under the, the vote, rather than go back and vote. Okay. Staff reports. Chris, you did a little change this time.
Yeah.
You gave us a seventeen-page report. I don't know.
Yeah, I give you a little insight in what you don't see each month. Typically, what I do is I take all of the monthly status reports from each of the department managers, and I consolidate and summarize those in a report for town council. And as part of the transition, you'll have an interim manager next month. We'll get a new manager in place, hopefully in the, in the May timeframe. And I thought for the next two months, it would be good. You can just get the unadulterated reports from each of the departments, and read them or not at your leisure. But you've got each of the detailed reports down here. I will provide some summary for, for the group of, of the main happenings. February, as, as folks probably remember, middle of February, we had another round of storms that brought more ice than snow this time. So we had some interesting cleanup in terms of accidents and downed trees and stuff. All of our teams, again, did a great job. Citizens stayed home, largely off the road, so that was good. And hopefully, knock on wood, we're out of the, out of the winter weather, and spring is, is on its way. The hydroelectric plant took advantage of a lot of rain that came before and after that ice storm. We had another month up over a hundred thousand dollars in generation. We are, we are well over the fiscal year budget, and we've still got another four months left. And Donnie, if, if we can continue to have rain, is on track for a record-breaking generating season, so.
Are you over half a million now?
We are over half a million, and if he can get over eight hundred thousand, he can close in on that record. Public Works, in the last month, has largely been working on cleanup of various storms, and cleaning ditches out, servicing all of their fleet, getting ready for warmer weather and more activity. You may have also noticed that they worked with a contractor to remove the old footbridge across Pool Creek, right there by the main beach house building. And it really wasn't functional, and it wasn't particularly attractive. At the recommendation of the Parks and Rec Board, we had that removed, and it kind of cleans up and frees up that area, so. More, more plans for, for improving that area on the way. Dredging is now underway. It's been a long time coming. It took us a long time to get through the state's permitting and approval process. We finally have all of that. The dredging company has mobilized. They're on site back here in the River Channel, and on into kind of the choke point where the Marina Bay empties out before you get out into the main portion of the lake. And they are working frantically to get as much done as they can in the month of March. The state doesn't allow us, for various ecological and spawning reasons, to, to dredge on beyond March, so we're going to get as much done as we can. We aim to take out thirty thousand cubic yards each season, so we'll get as much done as we can now. If we don't get the full thirty thousand cubic yards, we'll come, they'll come back and start again in December and continue on each winter. The plan is, we're on a ten-year contract. The equipment stays here on site, and in and out, in the off-seasons, when we're not having much tourism or fish spawning ecology, we get out there and we hit it. We are thoroughly testing the emergency dredging spoils areas on Morse Park. Those, as you may recall, were designed and engineered back in around 2009, 2010. And the intent is that those really become our primary pits after a major flooding event. So we're using them now, and completely exercising both. You pump into one, it drains into a second. It then drains in, back into the river. You're filtering at every step of the way, and as your first pit fills up with, with aggregate and sand, your vendor then goes in there and scoops out of that first pit and keeps it ready again for, for the next big dredging activity. So this first round, we're going to exercise and address any needs on those pits. And then our plan is to shift our, our regular activity across the river over to the, off of Boys Camp area where the town owns property, and we've used that in the past. So we'll create additional pits on that same model. That'll probably be next year's activity. So Dean is happy to have that dredging underway, and, and we should get a little better clearance for boat traffic coming in and out of the, the main marina this summer. The construction on the extension trail from Buffalo Creek Park over to Eagle Rock is getting ready to start this month. I think the Parks and Rec Board liaison will probably have some more to report on that, but I'm very excited. We've got grant money to support that. It's been a long time coming, and that'll add probably another five miles of true primitive backcountry hiking and mountain biking and camping opportunities, so that you can go all the way from Buffalo Creek Park at the head of Ball Mountain Lake over to Schumont Ridge and, and that area. That completes a pretty big section of ultimately what will be the Summit Trail Circle navigating all around. Once we get that finished, that opens up instantly existing trails across Rumbling Ball Ridge, and then back down toward Party Rock and this side of the lake, all on State Park property. So this will, this will open up a few more miles immediately after. Lastly, kind of continuing in fallout from the rezoning decision that was made by council in December, after lots of meetings and public hearings. On February twenty-second, there was a lawsuit filed in Superior Court. There are, there are two defendants named, Town of Lake Lure and Lake Lure Lodge, LLC. The lawsuit is brought by a group that has collectively been known as Protect Lake Lure, and the party specifically, there's, there's five individuals or groups. Stephen, Marsha Jo Eisenbrow, Lou Self, Martha C. Jones, Bruce and Cynthia Doolittle, David and Charlene Kohler, and Nancy Anderson. So, so as a result of that, council's going to have some discussion in closed session tonight about the lawsuit. We've engaged our town's defense team. The lodges engaged their defense team. Those teams have just started kind of to put their heads together on, on a defense strategy. It's a, it's a rather lengthy complaint. There are five main causes of action. There's a hundred and twenty-seven separate paragraphs of, of claims and assertions in there, so quite a bit for the attorneys to, to go through. And, you know, we're, we're in litigation now, and, and probably will be for, for some time until it gets resolved one way or the other. And that's all that I have in my report.
Very good, Chris. Thank you. Thank you very much. Stevie, you want to go next?
Yeah, I'll go ahead, and if any of you want to cheer now, I won't be talking much tonight, so. I've been remiss the last two or three months. I want to welcome Kevin and Joan Hatfield to the town. They've owned property here for a while, but they have been here in the council meeting for the last two or three months, and they're living here full-time now. So I wanted to welcome them and say thank you for attending these meetings. They're off of, off of Boys Camp Road. They're on Falcon Way or by Falcon Way. They've owned that cabin there since it was built, and now they're there. The, the Board of Adjustment had three applications for vacation rental permits that were approved, and one application for a variance on Luther Burbank. That was a front-street yard setback, and it was approved. The LSAB had one variance that was approved for that collapsed boathouse off of Lakeview Drive at 213 Lakeview. The Board of Adjustment did request that we, we entertain a backup digital system for BOA recordings. Being a quasi-judicial process, the minutes there are, need to be much more detailed than what would normally be expected, and any audio tape, of course, deteriorates over time. So we'd like to have a backup digital system for those, those meetings. The Board, the Board has expressed concern time and again about imposing certain safety conditions on vacation rental operating permits. Although it's within their purview, their, their concern is who would inspect them if they're imposed? And any town liability of doing it for one particular vacation rental permit and not doing it, not imposing something similar on another one that needed it. So that's, that's something that needs to be studied. The Parks and Recreation Committee had a wonderful presentation from Carolina Mountain Land Conservancy that you will hear next month at the council meeting regarding the Weed Patch Mountain Recreational Park. And so I'm not going to, that's, that's regarding a land grant and extending Lake Lure's recreational facilities. So I'm not going to say any more than that on that one. We will also hear the plan for geese mitigation next month. From, we're, we've been talking along with Flowering Bridge, we, the Parks and Rec, and with Chris about utility cost sharing, and we're studying that. The two large trees by the Flowering Bridge in the parking lot need to come down. Those two large maple trees are both dead. Branches fall off. And I think Melody is already talking to maintenance or whatever to try and make that happen. But those two trees do need to come down. Dale Minnick presented us with his capital budget proposed items, which will come out in further discussion at budget time. And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Thank you. John?
The zoning and planning meeting was scheduled for the day that we had the eyes, and so the meeting was canceled for the month of February.
Okay, that's good. You got off easy. Mary Ann?
Nothing really new with the ABC Board. They continue to have good sales. They are apprehensive about if and when their, their move will take place, and hope that it will be in the dead of winter sometime. It's already reported on some of the things from the Lake Advisory Board, from the things on the lake. One, I don't believe he mentioned, was a need for riprap around the point of Morse Park, hoping that the cost of approximately twenty thousand dollars will be available after the dredging is completed. They are taking depth readings in order to prepare a database of historic lake depth readings, which will be reviewed annually to determine where dredging is needed in the future. Already reported that the dredging has started in the river. We'll go through March, and then... The Commissioner Steve Weber gave an overview of potential lake structure regulation revisions, and pointed out changes that were made to the proposed amendments. And since it was presented in February first, that will be coming up later. The Board did approve the proposed changes unanimously. The Board discussed proposed restrictions for Lake Lure tour boats. They had asked Lake Lure Tours to write up what they proposed to be their operating procedures and regulations for their drivers. And that was made available to the Board. The Board approved that, and had a discussion regarding the renewal of contract in 2017 that's coming up for the operation of Lake Lure Tours. After some discussion, Gary Johnson made a motion to accept that proposal, and Joe Pritchett seconded it, and it was voted favorably unanimously. The Board discussed and suggested that other tour boats on the lake, and particularly Rumbling Ball, but they were concerned that all tour boats, or additional boats that might be tour boats in the future, perhaps needed to be considered for a contract or agreement with the town similar to the one that Lake Lure Tours operates under. It was pointed out, at one time, we had only one tour boat on the lake, and the town didn't allow any other tour boats. But as that has grown, only Lake Lure Tours has a contract with the town. It was the consensus of the Board that there should be a set of rules that apply to all tour boats. And the Board asked me to mention to council, because of the renegotiation of the Lake Lure Tours contract, that perhaps we should consider the idea of all tour boats being required to operate under an agreement with the town and under contract. The Board believes that if you are running a tour operation on the lake, you should have an agreement with the town, since you're operating on town property. And that's the item that we can discuss in new business. What they are looking for is direction from the council as to whether or not council wants them to look at this further, and perhaps make a recommendation to council at the, or at the Marine Commission meeting next month. In Fishery and Ecosystem, Mr. Hassan Foss and other volunteers have placed approximately forty-two new reefs with Christmas trees deposited around the lake to provide habitat. Think they had some volunteers who wanted to know where they were when they go fishing. There was some discussion of boat permits for residential and commercial use. The discussion was focused primarily on non-motorized. And Mr. Johnson commended Mrs. Lutz, the editor for the Lakefront Property Owners Newsletter, for doing a really good job of getting the word out of recent boating regulation changes. Joe Pritchett reported that next year, after the short dredging season this year, they expect a, a full season. And Mayor Keith shared a letter with the Board from some folks who were distressed over damage to their seawalls, and concerned about all commercial operations on the lake. I believe there's going to be some discussion with these folks at a, at a meeting, if they so choose, but there was no action taken in that regard. And that's my report.
Very good, Mary Ann. Thank you, Bob. Your utilities committee?
Right. We've got the utility board that meets the first Tuesday of every month at 2:00 PM. They're charged right now with one of the most difficult decisions and information, and I don't know if you call it policy or rate schedule reestablishment that we have to do. As you, most of you are familiar, our sewer plant fights to stay in compliance. We have been fined by the state. Usually it's during the summertime. We've been fighting for years on what to do with this process. Unfortunately, we've established a team on this utilities board, as well as our engineering and consultants who are here tonight to do a presentation. But what this comes down to, and I'll just be quick with that, is we have two choices. If we go out for a loan and straight out, unfortunately, Lake Lure, for an average rate of everyone who lives here, makes too much money. Therefore, you don't qualify for zero-interest loans or very low-interest loans. However, if we go up on the sewer rates to meet their standards, then we can qualify for very low or almost zero-interest loans that are out there, or bonds. So it's not an easy choice, and that's what our utilities board and our engineers and consultants are going to present to you tonight. But what we look at, if, if we don't go the route of the higher rates, you would roughly spend, and this is just based on initial numbers, about two and a half million dollars more in payments. So what comes first? Do you pay two and a half million dollars more in financing? Or do you break it up where everybody pays more in sewer rates? So this is a very tough decision. It's not easy. We have a wonderful team. Wayne Hight's chairing for us. The team's worked hard, so they're going to do their presentation tonight to the council and to you here, the public, and see, see where it falls and see what they recommend to, to everyone. So it's a tough decision, and really a tough topic for, for everyone here. So we'll be having that presentation tonight. And we encourage everybody to show up at these Tuesday meetings, the first of the month, at 2:00 PM, because we, anybody's got a, a great idea or a better idea, we're open. We want those ideas, and we want that participation. That's it.
Very good. Thank you, Bob. The next item on, is the public forum, and nobody has signed up, so unless somebody wants to speak, we'll move forward. Okay, moving to the consent agenda. It's number eight, and we've moved item eight B to the new business. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda without item B amended? Moved by Stephen, or second, second by Mary Ann. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's approved. Okay, and then we move on to, is there any unfinished business? I don't think so. Why don't we, Ron Morgan's here, right? Yeah, he's in back. Okay, why don't we deal with this? He's got to get to a class tonight. Ron, you want to come up and discuss your, the issue that you're looking at, and some thoughts that John had, which I think seemed very reasonable?
Just thank you, council. We had proposed recently, as you've seen before you, but for the benefit of the audience, we had proposed to add a, a storage building to our facility. We, as, as things go, we just have training props and different devices that we need somewhere to store. Stuff that we don't use all the time, but needs to be relatively handy to the fire station. After doing some research, the most economical facility that we could come up with to store this materials is, is a Connex box, a shipping container, which is, as everybody knows, is not extremely attractive, but it's very effective and very cost-effective. So what I was asking council, proposed to council, was permission to place one behind the fire station. Commissioner Moore and I had a discussion yesterday, and I certainly sympathize with the concern about it's not going to be the most attractive addition to Charlotte Drive. However, the property that we have does not lend to basically placing anything that's not visible. After some discussion, and everyone should have got a, an email with me with a picture and an optional location, that we could locate it at the golf course just across the hill from us, literally just, you know, probably a hundred and fifty feet away. We just have to drive over to the golf course. It would serve the same purpose for us. It would kind of be out of sight. And being that these are items that we're going to store, that we're going to use several times a year versus several times a week, we think we can live with that, and it won't really take away from the appearance of Charlotte Drive.
Want to say something about the financing?
The financing? Oh, well, basically, we have some, as funds go, we get a little bit of money donated along through the years and stuff, and so we've been kind of saving up and scrimping to where we could afford to do this. We can buy the Connex box for about thirty-two hundred dollars, and that's supposed to be shipped, delivered to us, is the way we understand it, coming from Fairview. So it's an eight-by-forty box, so it'll give us a good bit of storage. It's very durable, watertight, and it should be effective when it's stored in our equipment.
No, no increase in budget?
Oh, no, no. It's, it's money we already have in our budget. It's, it's no, no additional funds. I'm sorry. Didn't catch on quick, Mary.
Yeah.
Oh, no, we went out, okay. Today, I, I went by and looked at the, at that spot afterwards, and I think it's an excellent location.
Thank you.
What color is it? Green?
It will.
It looks red.
We, we probably won't know till we go around and pick one out, because they come in multiple colors. And we'd already figured that we might have to paint it. And depending on what color we get, you know, it might be okay, but, and Dale may have some say-so now on what color he wants us to paint it, but we anticipate having to put some paint on it.
I appreciate that. Either green or brown, something goes.
Yeah, we were, if we put the fire station, we're going to try to kind of make it match the fire station. the fire station, but if we put it over the golf course, brown might match his existing buildings better.
Dale was fine with it also, I met with him today as well.
Yeah, and I would like to say, I went over and talked to him, it, it was like, yeah, sure, we'll find somewhere to stick it, and he asked me to make the recommendation that was very convenient for us, and apparently not going to be a problem for him, so.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve Ron's recommendation?
Some move.
Moved by John?
Second.
Second by Mary Ann. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous? Okay, item number two.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Go to class. The, this is the question about, discussion about the tour boats and what we should charge or ask the Lake Advisory Board to look into relative to consistency of tour boat operations across the lake. Mary Ann, you want to just lead that? I mean, I don't know how we frame this, but.
Okay. Well, in my report, I summarized the discussion, and they felt since all tour boats operate on the lake, that not just Lake Lure Tours should be asked to follow rules. Lake Lure Tours was actually asked to present to the board what rules they operate under, and the board approved of those for this year. But looking toward a new contract in 2017, they were thinking that perhaps, Rumbling Ball, they suggested that if you agree, that Dean, take the rules that Lake Lure Tours is operating under, and talk to the person who directs the, the tours from Rumbling Ball. The lodge may be also doing tours. I don't know who might be doing tours in the future, but they felt that in 2017, perhaps it was appropriate for the town to consider rules for all tour boats, not just some of the tour boats. And they didn't want to go too far in making recommendations that had not been asked for. So they were asking for some feedback from town council as to whether or not they would welcome recommendations, or would charge the, the board with looking into this and making recommendations before the 2017 season. Do you have anything to add to that, Stephen?
Yes, and, and everyone pretty much knows my position on this issue, is I believe anyone making any kind of profit from a commercial operation on the lake should be paying a fee to do so, since that is town property. And, and whether it's by contract for the tour boats, or whether it's by fee for renting slips, or what have you, I believe that should be enacted. And, and I think we're long overdue in making something like that happen. Yes, I believe we should direct the LAB to further pursue and study this and provide recommendations.
Is that your motion?
Well, Chris.
Do we need a motion?
Well.
Chris, you were going to say something. I saw Chris.
Yeah, you can do the motion, and then I can bring it up in discussion.
Okay.
I can make, I'll make that.
That motion, okay, second?
I'll second.
Second by Bob. Let's see, any further discussion? Chris?
I, I was not present at the Lake Advisory Board discussion, and my comment, I think, has been covered here by what Commissioner Weber has added, in that I think there's really two components to this question. One is operating rules for anybody that's, that's, that's leading tours on the lake, and the second is payment to the town through a concession agreement for the privilege to be able to do that. And currently, and historically, we've covered both of those through a consent agreement. We have a ten-year-long consent agreement with Lake Lure Tours that covers both some specific rules and constraints for their business, and outlines a contractual payment relationship. If, and one of the things that the Lake Advisory Board can look at is if the intent is merely to bring everybody under the same set of rules, Marine Commission has a lot of flexibility and latitude to do that through our lake use regulations, and you could insert tour boat specific rules of whatever you want, and it would apply to everybody that's on there. But if you want to do payment and concession agreements, I think that those individual contracts are, are a good way to go.
That was their, their feeling, I think unanimously. There had been some distinction that Rumbling Ball operated from their private property versus the town operating from town property as being a distinction. But it was also pointed out that the boats don't operate on land. They operate on the lake, which is town property. And so that they all should have a, a similar agreement with the town, where the town benefits from the profits. And some of the members are very aware of the amount of money, which is hundreds of thousands of dollars in revenue from the boat tours, when very little is being contributed to the tax base from the land from which that, that tour operates at Rumbling Ball.
Right. And I, I, I think this, this is going to be a very sensitive topic if we lunge into it very quickly. I mean, it's, it's one of those things where I think there's got to be a, maybe even a process talked about before as to how we engage ourselves with the board over there, because this, this thing is, it's been a live issue for a long time. We had it with, with, with the issue of the Fourth of July, with Ron Morgan, and paying for services that the town was offering. It, it goes, it goes deeper than just tour boats. I mean, it, this is a, so I would encourage that, in our discussion with them, that we encourage them to look at the process and to be very careful, because we don't want to end up with a lot of animosity and, you know, potentially law-type actions as we go forward. But Chris, you've been working with that forever here, I mean, for ten, twelve years, so.
I think, I think you've got some common interests and some common ground to work from. We, we put in a concession agreement between the town and Rumbling Ball a few years ago to cover their non-motorized rental boats, stand-up paddleboards, kayaks, canoes, and things, and they wanted more than typically most businesses are allowed. And at that time, we said, well, come under a rent, a concession agreement, share a percentage of those revenues with the town, and they were happy to do that.
I wasn't aware of that.
And so we, we have that agreement in place. So I think using that as a starting point, extending that to motorized tour boats and rentals is not a far stretch. I think that in good faith negotiations, you know, you could probably talk about a phasing in period, so that they have time to plan for that in their business model, but I think it's, I think it's appropriate.
Do you suppose that as town manager, you could put together a, a written charge for them?
Yes, I can, you know.
Before the end of the month?
As, as I'm going department by department and trend, and transitioning, I'm leaving kind of thoughts and observations in a variety of topics, and yeah, I'll be happy to, to work with Dean on that.
Instead of us talking about it now and trying to come up with some words and so forth.
Yeah.
It's probably not a long charge. I mean, it's, it's pretty.
Don't we already have a motion?
We did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the motion is to ask the, the LAB to, to study this and bring us a report.
And it was seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Move on. Okay. Moving on to item 10B, which is the presentation by Jim with the original 10B, it's 10B1, I guess now. Presentation concerning the process for naming the town parks, recreation areas, and parks and recreation facilities proposed by Parks and Recreation Board. Jim, you want to come forward and talk to us about that?
Thank you very much. My name is Jim Walters. I live at 418 Chapel Point Road in Lake Lure. I'm the chairman of the Parks and Recreation Board. And based on conversations that I have had, both internally in the board meetings, as well as with Valerie Hoffman, who is our contracted branding manager, if you will, for the town and for the efforts that the town has made with Chimney Rock. She felt that it was important for us as the Parks and Recreation Board to, to have a standard, a practice, policy, procedure for naming the recreational areas, the parks, and the facilities that are attendant to both parks and, and recreation activities in Lake Lure. And she was very helpful in providing me with what amounted to a template that had been developed by the town of Mount Pleasant, Michigan. And she provided me with a lot of other additional information that, that I incorporated in to this proposal that, that Councilman Weber has offered to you this, or this evening. And essentially, in the past, I think it's been a, a process where a name got thrown into the hat, or maybe several of them did, and one of them got picked out, and things got named. There's no effort whatsoever on the part of what we're trying to accomplish right now to, to demean any of those, or even question the process that has been used in the past. But apparently, within the, the public relations work in municipal governments over the course of the last few years, there have been some standards that, that have been established and been utilized, and Valerie has been aware of those. And she thought it was worth our while to, to try to apply those to what we do in parks and recreation. We've got a couple of situations right now that are examples of things that are, that are hanging out there. The first of those is the park that we've been colloquially calling Pools Creek Park over on the other side of the beach toward the ABC Store. There are those that call it the grassy area by the ABC Store, because we've never really formally named it Pools Creek Park, or Pool Creek Park. So that's, that's probably the first one on the agenda, as, as we've opened this up in the course of the last year by taking down the fences and making it agreeable for people to use, both from the standpoint of the parking, where they share the lot with the ABC Store, access by opening it up, taking down the bridge that the, the concession era from the Lake Lure Tours and the beach wanted us to remove. We've really created a park there that is its own identity. And I think we're, we're going to get to the point here in the not-too-distant future where we're going to suggest a name for that. But I would like to do it under a, a, a formalized set of guidelines that have been presented by us and, and event, hopefully, or eventually approved by the, by the council. We appreciate the opportunity to make that point. The second, second opportunity that is, that is on the horizon is the, the Donald Ross Trail System out across Highway Nine from Ingalls. And there is a, because the school is there, and there are, we've, we've done a lot of, and Ed Dittmer particularly, has orchestrated the changing, the rerouting of the trails, opening up some new trails out there, connecting them in to the entire infrastructure that is the school. There is some, some thought that perhaps renaming that park would, is the right thing to do in 2016. So we are also looking at that one. We've got additional opportunities on the trails that Chris mentioned, out Buffalo Creek Park, and the Weed Patch Mountain Park that, that is on the horizon. And those are all things where on, on the trails that are embedded in the, in the parks, the, the facilities that are there, if we can follow a, a naming process that will give us the, the structure to do that, then I think it's the appropriate thing to do. We think it's, it's important to do that, to establish a, a sense of community pride, to ensure that the parks and the recreational facilities are identified and recognized by people. The, the people that use the parks need to have an association. There needs to be an identity there that, that, that links them to the parks. To acknowledge the values and characteristics of the town, recognize the strength and vitality of the names that we apply, so that, so that people will have an association with those. We want to encourage public participation in the naming process and provide an objective process for recognizing individuals or groups who are responsible for donations, either real property or financial. So that, that is the, the background. Those are sort of the ideals that we have, have put together, or that, that are written in this proposal, and as I said again, I appreciate very much the opportunity to make the presentation here tonight for your consideration.
If I may.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you, Jim. I strongly support this policy. We don't have one in town for naming such things. We do need one. Jim, the other day, I was in a hurry when I was given the draft and ran it over to Andy's office, so she would have it to get it on the agenda. So I didn't read it really until I got my packet. I have one question on page two, under exclusions. At the end of that second bullet there, it says, "are addressed in separate policies." Now, I know this was a draft from the Mount Pleasant, Michigan policy, so do we really have separate policies talking about memorial or honorary dedication of small park amenities?
No. My, my thought process on that was, or is, that as those evolve, we will essentially, on a case-by-case basis, create a policy based on whatever it is that we are suggesting should be named, or, or will be identified.
Should we change "are addressed" to "will be addressed"?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yes, absolutely.
Sounds good. Any other questions or comments for Jim? Okay. Then do I have a, a motion? Any other discussion? I, I motion to accept the policy?
I make a motion to approve the policy as amended.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Stephen, the second by John. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Good job, Jim.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
If I could make just one other quick comment. I really, I really do, as, as the chairman of the Parks and Recreation Board and a member for a couple of, for a year be, prior to the time I became the chairman, have a great deal of respect for Chris Braun and all of the work that he has done to, to help us and help the town in our efforts to develop a Parks and Recreation Board that is really second to none, I think, for a town of this size. We have got a fantastic facility format, and we owe a great, great deal of thanks to Chris for that.
Kind of you, kind of you to say so. Thanks for all your help.
Moving on to considered adoption of resolution number 160308 concerning request from Greg Gardner to quick claim a piece of property that adjoins his lot in Firefly Cove.
Yes. This is fairly straightforward. We do this from time to time. This is a very small piece of property along the lakefront where the historic town boundaries and property boundaries haven't run consistent with where the lake's edge is. So you end up with a piece of property that people think is part of their lakefront, but technically... but technically their property juts in and it's town property. It's not property that town will ever want to use. We don't normally discover these until somebody is ready to develop a lot. They go down, they measure their shoreline because they want to build a dock or a lake structure, and it reveals they don't have enough shoreline because the town has some of their shoreline. So the remedy is quite straightforward, and our town attorney works with us, and we basically just quick claim that property back to them. So it redraws their property line to match whatever they have at the water's edge. And in this case, it's .02 acres of a little piece that we basically give to them.
Are there any questions for Chris on this?
Yeah, I understand John Moore owns the adjacent property to this. Well, Paul owns some of it, too. You don't object into it?
No, no.
But I do understand from Sheila that she wants this put in one consolidated boundary so she doesn't have to deal with two tracks. So I understand part of the resolution is that once the town signs this, I hold this and don't record it until he produces a signed consolidated boundary to record simultaneously with it.
Oh. On the quick claim deed itself, and I don't know if this is important, but it has, the deed was made the ninth of February, I assume that's got to be changed.
It has to be.
But then on the back, it's got also February 2016 for the notary. So that would obviously have to be changed.
Valerie just strikes that out, writes in March, puts in the right date. This was done before the February meeting, but it was done right before the February meeting and did make it on the agenda that time.
With those changes, do I have a motion to accept this?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Bob, the second.
Second.
Second by Mary Ann. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay. We are now back to what originally was 10A, which is the sewer rate presentation. So we can get set up?
Yeah. We'll have our engineering team come up. We're having some technical difficulties with the projection system, so we've got hard copies for all of the commissioners and enough for people in the audience to follow along. Brian, you going to come up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is Brian Tripp from the firm WK Dixon.
Good evening. As mentioned, we're here to talk to you about the sewer rates and really how it relates to the Green Line project. So what I'll try and do is walk through the presentation and tell people where we are in the format so they can follow along. With that, I wanted to talk a little bit about why we're here today. You know, the plant was originally, or 1927, the town put the sewer system underneath the lake, basically. So 12 and 1/2 miles. 1969, a 350,000 gallon per day activated sludge plant was installed, that's your, down by your current plant. 91, that plant was converted to almost a million gallons per day. 2007, you had an order of consent from Deener that basically made you address infiltration and inflow that was occurring into the sewer lines under the lake that was really pushing the volume of wastewater through the plant. And as a result of that, in 2009, the town got what was called an ARR grant with the help of Brown Consultants to address that and drastically reduce the amount of INI, or infiltration and inflow, that was getting into the plant. So that was completed about in 2011, and that kind of brings you where you are today. Commissioner Cameron mentioned that you've got some existing issues out there. So I'm going to page two, the top of page two, right now. Some of those issues are, you continue to have violations at the plant for ammonia nitrogen, total suspended solids, and pekukoliform. You've got some problems with treating the kind of wastewater that's coming in there. So you still have infiltration and inflow or water getting into the sewer system. And what that means is it results in what's called low-influent BOD or biological oxygen demand. So wastewater, basically, the way you treat wastewater is you allow microbes and biological activity to treat the waste. Well, when there's low food source in that waste, it's harder to treat that waste. You've also got low temperatures, so that water is cooled dramatically underneath the lake, the wastewater is. And that cooling effect presents a problem to treating the waste as well. At the plant itself, you've got excessive solids at the plant. You've had a backlog of solids that get produced as a byproduct. Here recently, I think the town has worked diligently to try and address some of that backlog and get some of those out, and it's an ongoing issue, and it continues to hit your budget on a yearly basis because you have to continue to remove those solids to allow the plant to operate efficiently. You've also got high iron concentration coming into the plant, and that's really from iron leaching from those sewer lines underneath the lake. And that iron exacerbates the treatment process. So we've equated it in the past to plain whack-a-mole, for instance. You've got all these parameters that you're trying to meet, and you know, you can hit down three of them and get three of them addressed, and then one pops its ugly head up. And so you go back and you try and fight that one, and it throws another one out of whack. And so it's an ongoing battle for the town to try and address all these parameters at the same time. You've got limited space at the existing site to expand the plant or improve it. You've got some stuff going on with some of the pumps that we can improve the pumps to operate more efficiently as well. You did recently get a new, what's called MPDS permit. It's basically the permit from the state that allows you to discharge your wastewater into the river. You got better permit limits with it, but the fact of the matter is the town is still struggling to meet those permit limits. So it's continuing to be an issue for the town. You continue to get fined as well. So I mentioned in this presentation on the bottom of page two that you've got a number of fines since 2006 through 2014. Since that time, I think there were some recent fines here over the last 60 days that the town is starting to encumber again. In addition, you have been previously been under kind of a consent agreement with the state to remedy the situation. They didn't necessarily prescribe what that remedy was. They allowed the town to try and figure out what that solution may be. That consent agreement is kind of timed out, is my understanding. It was initially handled here in the local DEQ office of Swanonoa. It's since been, we call it, booted up to Raleigh for them to consider. So you're kind of operating in a limbo fashion. And why I bring that up is that eventually, at some point, the state's going to come back and say, okay, you're continuing to not meet your permit limits. We've got to do something. And they could take drastic steps, if you're not careful, to force the town into doing something. However, the town has been being proactive and letting the state know, look, we realize this is a problem. We're trying to address the problem. And that's probably part of the reason why the state hasn't, I'll call it, dropped the hammer on the situation yet, but someday they're not going to, they'll say enough is enough. On top of that, you've got the Environmental Protection Agency that is stepping into utilities throughout the southeast and saying, okay, states like North Carolina, if you're not pushing these issues with these folks, we're going to come in and make it happen. So we've seen that happen in a number of places, and I can give examples of clients like ourselves and Brown are working with that have had EPA come in and take over for the state, basically, because they said the state's not doing enough and moving things along quick enough. So I kind of got you to where you're at today. So you may recall that probably about two to three years ago, the town participated in a high-level study with Rutherford County, Spindale, Rutherfordton, Forest City. Cliffside was a member of it or a part of the study, but ultimately, it was looking at the long-term sewer needs of the county and the municipalities. And the results that came out of that were, two of the pressing issues were, Cliffside Sanitary District was in dire straits, and that's an ongoing issue that is being worked through with the county right now. But the town was also having problems, they realized, with, again, meeting permit limits. And so since that time, the town basically contracted with WK Dixon to do what's called a preliminary engineering report. So we did this high-level, 100,000-foot look at it. Now we've done what's called an engineering report that meets state guidelines that basically goes through an alternatives analysis for the town. So we looked at a number of alternatives, including doing nothing, which isn't really a great option to the town. The other options are, of course, upgrading your plant. That is still an option that's on the table. We also looked at regionalized treatment at Spindale or Rutherfordton. Part of that study, we have to look at not only what those capital costs would be for any of these options, but we've got to look at the long-term operating costs and what that present value would be of that, or present worth cost of that would be 20 years out. So if you get to the bottom of page three, you'll see that we looked at those options. And really, what influences that present worth or those operating costs were the rates, particularly in the Spindale and Rutherfordton case, on what they would charge the town to treat their waste. So we got rates back from both Spindale and Rutherfordton. And as you can probably surmise by looking at this, you'll see that the operating or projected O&amp;M cost was, what, $12 million less with going with Spindale? They gave you a much more favorable rate. And I think they continue to talk to Mayor Keith and Chris about having the town tie on to them as well. So we can talk a little bit more about that later. But if you really look at it, upgrading the plant versus going to Spindale at the present value cost, that far one on the right-hand side of the page, you know, were an order of magnitude of $250,000 apart right there. At that level of cost, close to 20 million, I'd call that negligible. So you really kind of do have two options in front of you. The problem with the treatment plant option is what we're talking about there is putting a very sophisticated treatment plant in place. You probably could fit it on the site. We would need to do some things, what we call pilot testing, testing of treatment processes out there to see if we could actually treat for all those parameters we were talking about earlier. So not only are our operators right now having trouble just operating the plant, they're doing a great job, don't get me wrong, but it's a daily struggle for them. So now we're talking about basically putting a highly sophisticated plant in place at an extreme cost that would be a continued operational issue for anybody that'd be working with it. So as Commissioner Keith mentioned, going to the top four, top of page four, we started looking at some of the funding-type options available to you. And really, there's probably two main funding mechanisms in this day and age. There used to be a lot of grants available to towns like Lake Lure, but a lot of those funding sources for grants have dried up. And in this day and age, there's really two loan-type agencies, and that's SRF, the State Resolving Fund, State Revolving Fund with the North Carolina Division of Environmental Quality, which used to be called Deener up until a few months ago. And then there's also USDA loans. So you start looking down there, you see 20- and 30-year terms and 40-year terms. The North Carolina Division of Environmental Quality, which used to be called Deener up until a few months ago. And then there's also USDA loans. So you start looking down there, you see 20- and 30-year terms and 40-year terms. The North Carolina Division of Environmental Quality, which used to be called Deener up until a few months ago. And then there's also USDA loans. So you start looking down there, and you see 20- and 30-year terms and 40-year terms. The North Carolina Division of Environmental Quality, which used to be called Deener up until a few months ago. And then there's also USDA loans. So you start looking. Long-term costs of interest costs associated, what, close to 8 million, close to 10 and 1/2 million if you went with them, versus if you go with SRF, that other funding source, we've got, if we get a loan at 2% over 30 years, you'd have a $2.5 million cost associated with the interest payments. Or you could get a 0% loan with them, and it would save you a minimum of $2.5 million as well. So why we're here this evening is there's a critical timeline associated with that. There's an April 29 application deadline for the town. And the way that the state looks at how they're going to give folks either a 0 or a set interest rate is they've got a criteria or equation, basically, that they plug median household income into the poverty rates. And ultimately, the rates that the town is charging its citizens for treatment. And you don't have any control over median household income. You have limited control or no control over the poverty rate and things of that nature. The one place where you can control that is your rates. And what we're trying to do is get the town over what's called a 10-point threshold. So if we raise rates by what we're recommending this evening by, right now, we'll get to that slide in a minute, but it'd be going to $120 bi-monthly for your inside residential rate. That would get you over that threshold. So no matter what, by April 29, you would qualify for that 0% interest rate. If we don't do that by April 29, there are other opportunities to apply for funds with the state. We can't guarantee that that funding equation they use won't change by the next application cycle. The flip side of that is, it could change differently, that there could be additional monies available. So as we talk about later on, if the town elects to go forward, that doesn't negate the fact that we're going to continue to find and look at best options for the town and best opportunities for grants or better interest rates or partners to participate. But as the initial first step, we're recommending raising rates this evening to qualify for that 0% interest rate and go from there. So if you go to the bottom of page four, you can see where your rates are comparable to some other communities. Yeah, and this is a little bit differently. You've got to remember that the town has a bi-monthly rate. So the state and really the nation as a whole really compares things from an apples-to-apples perspective on a monthly basis. So you may look at this and go, well, I'm not paying 38.50 a month. I'm paying the $67 bi-monthly. So that's how we got to that 38.50 by dividing that 67 by two. So we were trying to put apples-to-apples in that chart. You can see where it would take you to qualify. We said going to $60 a month or ultimately $120 bi-monthly. But really, with that present worth type cost evaluation we did, it shows that from that time, we're projected that you'd only have to raise rates another $5 a month to pay for the cost of the project. So what that would do in the short term would also be, give you some mechanisms to start growing your reserves and fund some parts of the project here initially as design is done, because the design of this project and the negotiation phases and all the work that will go in is a long process. So it'll give you time to start bankrolling some of that money to, for instance, start paying some of the fees associated with the project. So if you go to the top of page five, you'll see what your current rates are on the top of the page. And then the lower half of that first slide on page five shows what we were projecting the rates to go to. And this was something that was discussed in depth with the Utility Advisory Board last week, and this, I believe, is consistent with their recommendation that came out of the meeting at that time. You'll see that we've kind of changed from three columns to two columns of rate structure in an effort to help simplify the rate structure some. That was something that was already being proposed, that the town was going to enact in the latter half, I guess, the next fiscal year anyways. So, excuse me, trying to stay consistent with what the town was planning on doing in the long term. But you've got those rates there. Something else that came out of that on the lower half of page five, some of the questions revolved around, okay, now, how does this really affect our rate payers? What rate classes do they fall in? So you see a table there showing where, not individuals, a few individual businesses come out in those rates, but you don't have a lot of large, commercial, extra-large, or commercial, extra-extra-large customers. You've got one of each. You've got some smaller, small, commercial, medium, commercial, and large commercial, but you know, the majority of your rate generation is with your residential connections. And ultimately, that's the only place the town is looking, not the town, the state is looking at from the standpoint of that equation I talked about previously. So we want to make sure that if you do raise rates, you're consistent across the board in some way, shape, or form with the remainder of your rates. But the only thing they look at in that rate equation, or that equation that we're using to get to that 10 points, is the inside residential rate. So let's go to the top of page six, some of the key points. Really, out of necessity, the town is going to build the Green Line. That's been my understanding through discussions with council, the Utility Advisory Board. And right now, the opinion is that you would be better off raising rates now to have that long-term savings of that $2.5 million in interest. The other side of it is, ultimately, the town has had a rate structure in place that the rate covers your operating costs and your debt service, but you historically haven't been funding capital investment. And that's been something that's been lacking and has been on the council's, on the commission's agenda and in their thought process here lately. So this mechanism in raising rates would allow you to start funding capital investments such as the Green Line project. You know, I mentioned that if the town doesn't start doing these things, that you run the risk of the state coming in and forcing your hand or even the federal government. And I talked about the fact that you've got a deadline fast approaching of April 29 for the current application round with the state. So what would the next steps be? Next steps would be to take into consideration raising those rates to the $60 a month, or hopefully that whole rate structure that I proposed on the top of page five. You would hopefully submit an application here by April 29 to apply for a loan at that 0% interest rate. You know, one of the things that still would need to be worked out was a final agreement with, in this case, the town of Spindale, since they gave you the most favorable rate. The other thing that the town wants to continue doing is investigating partners for the project. The town realizes that operating a sewer or even a water system is a difficult endeavor at best, and... at best, and are open to opportunities to find ways to ease that burden on the town. So we continue to talk to others to see, whether it be Rutherford County, an existing authority like Broad River Water Authority, a new authority, some format that could help the town in the long run. So going back to that high-level study that we talked about, that $100,000 look, we, one of the things that came out of that, people were hoping that, you know, we could just say, oh, you do step A to step B to accomplish something. Well, it's more like a step A all the way through Z. So this is taking some of those first initial steps to making something like that happen. You know, ultimately, the question remains, who would own, operate, and maintain that line going to somebody like Spindale? Here initially, there really isn't another option, other than the town owning, operating, and maintaining that. However, it goes back to, again, let's investigate partnering and see if there's an opportunity to bring somebody else into the mix. So going on to the last slide on the top of page seven, some of the steps, additional things that you need to think about are completing or approving the engineering report. I talked about that PER that we had done. Town has that before them now for basically approval. We've got to submit that to the state here at some point as well. And then part of the contract, the next item, is actually approving a contract with Brown Consultants and W.K. Dixon to start doing the design work for the proposed project. And that includes doing some environmental work as well as the full-scale design of the project. And then I mentioned again that we'll continue to look at grant opportunities and other funding sources as that funding landscape changes. It changes from year to year. So I mentioned that there used to be lots and lots of grant agencies. There used to be something called the, there still is, the Clean Water Management Trust Fund used to fund sewer projects. Well, now they only really fund what I'd call restoration and land conservation, basically. So they took wastewater out of their mix. There used to be something called, I forget who else I was going to go to here, the Rural Center. Rural Center still exists, but they're no longer in the business of providing grants to communities for water and sewer work. So a lot of those grant opportunities have dried up for the town. So that's the presentation at this point. Can I answer any questions at this time?
I'd like to open it up for the public if they've got any questions.
It's okay with me.
Sure. Is there anyone out there in the audience that'd like to ask them any questions? Now's the time, please.
Lynda, did you raise your hand or brush your hair? Okay.
It's complicated.
Yes, ma'am.
It sounds like a repeat of what we heard before.
We just, we're getting a few months ago.
I have a question that occurred to me as you were talking about the iron that is leaching out of the pipes.
Yes, ma'am.
And I presume that's been happening over almost 100 years now.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm wondering, as the iron comes out of there, I know with copper pipes, they get so paper-thin eventually, they fail. And I'm wondering what the time regarding when those iron pipes would reach a point? Is that going to be in the near future, or is that way down the road that we don't need to worry about?
Professor Brown, come to the.
Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight. And not all the iron's coming out of the pipes. Some of the, a lot of the water here has naturally occurring iron. And those pipes were, back in the day when they were installed, they were four-foot joints, and they were very thick-walled. And we actually got a few pieces of that pipe during the repair. We got a bell section and a section. And the condition of that pipe is still a good 3/8 to a half-inch thick. So in those days, they did not line cast iron pipe with cement or some sort of a corrosion-resistant material. But I would say that the depth that pipe is, there's not much action on it from the water movement or boats or anything like that. And if it's lasted this long, and what we've, what we did during the pipe-wrapping project, observations and whatnot, I would say it's in pretty good shape for the age.
So the flow inside the pipes is not doing significant corrosion?
No. There is some, obviously, because all pipes unlined will corrode. What I'm saying is the original pipes that were used had such a thick, probably close to 5/8 of an inch thick wall, that they're, especially the larger diameter pipes. And the few pieces that we got still had a good section of wall thickness. So I didn't mean to get that technical, but.
I just appreciate you having some weight was there when it was put in.
Yeah, it was quite a project, actually.
What is it that we're looking for tonight? What's our next step?
I think what you've got on the agenda before you this evening are really, I guess, a couple of things. You've got to talk about the sewer rates, because I'm assuming that's a, you've got a notification process that you can't just say this evening that you're raising rates. You want to put a, I may let.
Yeah, well, you know, we'll want to have another public session on this. This is a first hearing, the first reading of it. Gives an opportunity for the public to see it, to react to it, to ask questions, for council to consider it a little bit more, you know, in general, changes of this magnitude. The guidance from council has been, don't rush into this. Let's let people have a chance to absorb it and give feedback on it. So by next month's meeting, we would ask the council to approve a new rate structure for sewer rates, giving us a month to be able to spread that and kind of work it through the community and come up with some communication strategies and to come up with some talking points for the commissioners, you know, much of which are found in this document. But we'll need to boil it down. I think one of the things that we can anticipate, last time we raised rates, not quite a year ago, we were getting everybody onto a flat rate of $77, or 65 if they're also on water. Everybody, most of our customers are not on water. We're getting everybody to a 77 rate. After we did that, as you recall, the very next meeting, we had a fair number of people that came and gave very compelling stories of the fact that they're retired, they're on fixed income, that their utility bills are already a big portion of their budget. And they had been paying less than $55 every two months, and to jump to 77 was a bridge too far for them. So we regrouped, and we analyzed how many of them there were. We came back to council, and council essentially put them on a staggered rate increase. In over three years, we'd get them up to the 77 rate. We can anticipate the same challenge when we're talking about jumping from 77 to 120 every two months, or $60 a month. I think absolutely we're going to have to have a response to people who in town say, I just can't afford that. Some of the things that we talked about is that, you know, given the diversity of economics and demographics and affluence in town here, we've got some people who, you know, wouldn't bat an eye at these rates. We've got others that recognize that, you know, today, $60 a month for sewer, a typical high-speed broadband internet connection is $60 a month. A typical cable TV or satellite TV connection with all the bells and whistles is $80 to $100 a month. A cell phone is, you know, so when you put it in that context, $60 a month for an absolutely essential service like sewer, you know, is reasonable in context. But for somebody that is used to, you know, paying all the essentials of life, looking at going from 77 to $120, so from 38.50 a month to 60 a month, that's going to be a tough pill for folks to swallow. We researched, last time we did this, whether there's our government programs, supplemental programs, assistance programs to help people pay their utility bill, and we came up empty on that. There's some home heating assistance programs, there's some food assistance programs, but very little help out there for water bills, sewer bills, electric bills, cable, cellphones, the like.
As Chris mentioned, we, you know, we staggered the rate increase the last time over several years. If we did that again, how does that impact our application with the state for the loan?
You would not qualify for the 0% interest rate then, because you've got to have that rate in place by the time we make application on April 29th.
On April 29th.
Yes, sir.
So if we don't do it until next month, it still isn't going to help.
If you prove it at your next council meeting.
And the unknown is, the unknown is that if we wait six months from now, the whole demog, everything might change.
Yes, sir.
And there might not be the zero rate available, or there.
Or the equation that they use to get to who qualifies for 0%, the bar could be raised even higher, could be lowered. We can't predict, but historically, things have not necessarily trended to the benefit of making things easier. So the state is in the position, and I think we can probably talk about it from a different aspect, of making sure that people or municipalities are funding their assets like water and sewer. So they are putting mechanisms in place with their funding programs that basically drive municipalities to raise rates if you want to qualify for what we consider advantageous rates and things to use from them. So they are doing that with some other grant process. They've got these things called planning grants for different mechanisms. But to do that, you've got to have good rates and show and demonstrate that you're doing the right things and that you've got a track record of raising rates, that you are, have rates that are consistent with the norm and averages without the state and throughout the nation.
One of the, one of the things that we can predict with delays is the cost of the project only go up. I entered this job in 2009, seven years ago, and in the prior year, in 2008, Harlow and Jeffrey had just finished some work with the town and Rutherfordton at the time, different councils and different priorities. At that time, this project as proposed was an $8 to $10 million project with construction costs in 2008. In 2009, we were unable to get grant funding for this project. We were in the middle of a recession, and the money that was available was, you know, we had to change our strategy. So seven years goes by, we still have a need for this Green Line project, and now it's a $12 million project. So, you know, further delays will probably increase that number.
Right. And one thing about it now is we have a given. We know the path we have to take to make this happen. It's almost fixed of what we need to do. If we delay, you go into that unknown with the state on qualifications and such. One other thing I want to point out is I believe we need a couple of motions tonight, a couple of votes. One will be on executing a contract with Brown Consultants. And the other thing I'd like to do is keep working, Chris, hard, but to ask him to get with Spindale to establish this contract and get the initial communication going so we can get a contract with them. Because right now, we know what that fixed cost is, and while we're getting into this in the next 30 days, we'd like to have something that says, yeah, we're going to honor that rate per thousand that they've given to us. Just for your information, Rutherfordton was about six times the rate that Spindale gave us per thousand. They weren't interested in us. Wayne, also, I want to give you the opportunity, is there anything you want to add or present for us?
Everything Howard put, put forth, I've already been talking about. We started this project, I think, back in 2008, and it was an $8 million project at the time. Lynda and I were, heard this before on what it would cost, and now it's gone up, what, 50% from that. And the key points that Brian was pointing out, this is a necessity. In other words, if we don't do something, the state's going to come in and help us, which is going to be a couple of things, very embarrassing and also very expensive on that. The operation has no reserve fund. So if we have a pump go out, some malfunction piece of equipment in the meantime, we've got a problem paying for it. And these rates do include monies to build that reserve fund back up and put that in effect, which we need to do. And we, the Utilities Commission, basically recommend that you look at these rates and accept them. It's increased, I know it's a bitter pill to swallow at one time for folks, but it's, again, it's a necessity. We've got to do, we've got to do something, and it's very time-sensitive that we do it. That's about all I had there.
Thank you. Yes.
Assuming, though.
Come up, Lynda, just tell them to get it on.
Hi, I'm Lynda Turner. I live at 211 Hawx Ness Trail. Assuming that we got the sewer rate increase, and assuming that we got a 0% loan, and assuming that we got a contract signed with Spindale, what is, does anybody know the timeframe of start to finish of getting a Green Line operational?
I think we had projected that, what was it, sometime in 2019, when the project would be completed, so.
So for three years, we'd have to hope that our current system continues to work and continue to have penalties and.
On the plus side, though, you'd be able to show the state and the federal government that you've taken proactive steps. And again, when they see you take those proactive steps, they typically show a little bit more leniency. You may still be put under what's called a consent order with the state, but typically in those time, I'm saying typically because I can't project the future, I don't have a crystal ball, but they recognize that somebody like the town is trying to make efforts.
Okay, thank you.
So tonight, you know, unless there's any direction from the council of, you know, additional study or additional information, there's no action necessary on the rate question. And when you're finished, we can then move into the next two pieces of this where we can direct some immediate action.
However, if we go launch into a big PR campaign, I mean, it's not public relations, but we have in effect said we are going to raise rates because that's what's going to happen. I mean, even if the reaction of the town is negative, we don't have a choice. So we are making a decision tonight to raise rates. I mean, I think, you don't do that, you don't get into a PR thing and expect to get all the arrows from everybody. If we don't decide tonight, we're going ahead with this. I mean, maybe I'm not making sense, maybe I'm not saying it right, but we don't have a choice.
No. I mean, you know, unless, unless you're going to direct our team to go develop a different strategy, I think what you have in front of you is the rate structure that you'll be asked to pass in April. And then what we want to approve tonight is a couple of contracts which allow these guys to continue to do work under this project.
Well, we do have somewhat of a choice. Either raise the rates or delay it another six months and create some unknowns and potential for more long-term cost. So, I mean, that's your choice, really.
I've just asked Chris to check, make sure there's no procedure that we need to wait longer on, that kind of thing. Is there any harm in waiting this next 30 days, guys, as far as you can still get the paperwork ready and done?
We need, what's critical for the team tonight is for y'all to pull the trigger for us to get started on this application. It's very long and cumbersome, the environmental is complicated, and, but if you do the rate adjustment in April, that'll still work. We know what they're going to be, and we can plug those in at the right place in the application.
Will the new rates, or the rates that are requested here tonight, will they cover the debt service on the loan?
Yes, they will. And the beauty of the flat rate, I really like the council to hear this. The beauty of the flat rate is that the manager and the town has a, they know what their specific revenue's going to be. It's not based upon how much sewage is flowing out of those pipes. It's not based upon how much sewage is flowing out of those pipes. It's a flat rate, so, so we, we can pretty much determine exactly what your revenue's going to be, and what the cost of the debt service is, and yes, that'll take care of it.
Okay.
Well, I know, I don't...
I got an issue, and, and it was brought up by Bob. One sixty-eight, three fourteen says, "A city may establish and revise from time to time schedules of rates and stuff like that for any public enterprise." But in A-one, it says, "Before it establishes and revises schedule of rates, fees, or charges, establishes or revises," you've got to have a public hearing. And notice of hearing should be given at least once in a newspaper, having a general circulation. Well, I don't see public hearing on the agenda.
Not for, not for tonight, which is why it's planned for April.
Oh, okay.
It would give us time to notice that as a formal public hearing. Similar to, similar to what we did with the lodge, which was to kind of have the, the final presentation, final chance for everybody to absorb it, and then advertise it, come back at the next meeting, and have a formal public hearing.
So you're not talking about actually adopting the rate increases they're proposing tonight, you're talking about going forward, calling for the public hearing, and finalizing it after the public hearing on April?
Correct. The only suggested motion we have in your packet tonight pertains to the engineering contract and the aerial survey, which are the next two items on the agenda.
Okay.
I've got two questions. One is, for businesses like Pat Cook's, what does, what does the rate, what does the new rate do to her? How much more would she be paying?
Cabin.
Each one's on its, on sewer?
Per cabin.
So that's the, that's three hundred dollars a month.
Per cabin.
The, the, for us...
Should be going from one oh five for two months per cabin to one forty for two months per, per cabin.
Correct.
So you have to multiply that times five, so...
Okay.
So thirty-five for two months, so that's five hundred and forty dollars.
You're, you're a small user, commercial, small user.
Yep, about sixteen dollars per month per cabin increase.
Right, right.
Okay.
And you know, Mrs. Petey, I don't understand why these rentals, these vacation rentals are, that you all know, are considered commercial, that they pay the regular rates. That's not fair for somebody like me, Graff and Lodge, and like...
I've, I've had some discussions on that issue with a few folks, doing some research.
It is not fair.
I hear you.
And that, and that is on the agenda of topics for the Utilities Advisory Board.
And we'd like you there when that comes up?
Send me an email, and I'll be there if, if I can. I'm going through a lot.
Understand.
My, my other question is on the opinion of probable engineering costs. Do, do we have anything to compare this to? How do we, how do we know, I know we do a ton of work with Brown...
Are you on the, are you on rates or on the contract?
I'm on the contract now.
Oh, okay.
How, how do we know that this is a competitive rate? I guess, I don't know if that, I guess that question is for you, Chris.
Well, part of it is based on our long experience in working with both of those firms, and the fact that, that we're kind of doing a creative arrangement here, and we're having both firms together split the, the project in two. And so, you know, part of this is that we have two independent firms, kind of, kind of, you know, working and keeping each other in check. One is responsible for a certain set of deliverables and rates, and another, a, a separate set on that. But I have not gone and, and bid this same scope of work to anybody else.
Well, so, you know, over ten million dollar project, million seven, looks like in engineering, is that, is that something, not, not that, not that I question what these gentlemen have given us, they've given us good prices in the past, but do, to do our due diligence, do we need to do that?
We're not required to, but that's at the preference of, of council. Yes.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, please.
Thank you for, I worked, Brian and I worked on the contract together, and, and the, the cost base is a competitive, it's very competitive. This type of work flows, because the dollars will flow ultimately through the state of North Carolina, there are, there are caps effectively on, on what we can charge to, as a starting point. And then he and I looked at all the individual items and broke them apart based upon scope of services, so we, we don't replicate costs and aren't having you to have, so we're both not doing the same thing and charging you twice, but so that there's a good workflow through our project, identifying both our strengths and, and some local working knowledge, and a lot of knowledge that W.K. Dixon, Brian, has worked with. But, but those costs are, are effectively capped through, through the SRF program. Ultimately, this contract would go through them as well for, for, for approval and the process. And, and we do a lot of SRF work, and, and we are very competitive on the, on the marketplace with, with our competition, our pricing.
I'm sure that's probably the case. I just, well, if somebody comes to me and asks, "Okay, you sent, spent ten million dollars on this project, how do you, how do you know you got the best price?" I need...
Well, it's very hard in the engineering world. First off, you know, you can't bid, you can't bid for our services. That, that's very true. So you can't, Chris can't go out and ask for a competitor to give him a, a price. "Hey, give me a price for your engineering services." That, that, that he can't do, the town can't do, first off. So, so the, the probable costs and all the background work we've done as, as we've built towards this, has, has really engaged our two firms as being probably the, the best qualified in a qualifications-based scenario. So then, so we reach a cost point, then there is a level of, of trust that, and understanding of, of the capping of, of our, what we can charge and, and trust with the town, that we will give you the product for, for a good price.
What's, what's customary in municipal engineering is that, is that each county or town has a relationship with one or more consulting engineers that are essentially kind of on contractor-retainer, and you work through that collective history and trust that you build. Usually on these projects, the, the lion's share of the cost is on the contract, construction, implementation side. That definitely gets bid out. And the services that, part of the services in the engineering contract is that they run the bidding process, and, and, and make sure that it's competitive, make sure that it meets all the state statutes, and that you end up with a very competitive set of bids for the construction piece of it. But, but Jeffrey's absolutely right. For the engineering piece, it's kind of like legal work, in that you develop a relationship. Now, one of the reasons that, we've got a long relationship with the town, with, with Jeffrey and Harlow's firm, they're a good fit for us. They're small, they're close by in Asheville. In the past, we've worked with much larger civil engineering firms at higher rates, and, and frankly, you know, not as great a quality of, of work. We've added Brian and W.K. Dixon to the team because they went through a competitive process where Rutherford County wasn't competing necessarily on price, but Rutherford County wanted a comprehensive regional sewer study done, and they had four or five different firms propose based on their qualifications and their methodology. And, and Brian's firm won that work, and as you know, worked with the county and other municipalities, did a fantastic piece of, of work. And because of all that knowledge and experience that they now bring to the table, it, it seemed prudent on my part to say, you know, they need to be part of, of this team, and we didn't want to replace or supplant our, our preferred in-house consulting firm in Brown. So I'm really pleased that the two of them have collaboratively and creatively put together a stronger team together.
I'm not, I'm not questioning all these fellows. I just want to make sure that on, you know, if we're spending this much of the town's money, the taxpayers' money, that we have, that we just know we're getting the best value for it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I've reviewed these costs and such, and with the projects I've worked on, which, you know, I've been on some large projects. I don't see anything out of line here in working with them. They've been very proficient at what they're doing, and I'm very comfortable with them.
Okay.
So you have two, you have, you have a, a thick packet of an engineering contract with a subcontract underneath it. Brown will be the prime contractor, W.K. Dixon will be the subcontractor. They estimate at this point, the whole project through two thousand nineteen is a, is a million, little over a million seven in fees estimated between those two firms. In addition, one of the things that they'd like to get started immediately on is there's a proposal from an aerial survey firm that, that through airplane surveying, can survey and get detailed data on the route, the eighteen miles between here and Spindale, and we've only got a couple of weeks to get that in before the leaves come back on the trees. So the proposed motion is to authorize me, as town manager, to execute both the engineering contracts and the aerial survey contract.
I'll be glad to make that motion. I, I thought the aerial was pretty reasonable considering what it costs to fly an airplane these days, since I used to be a pilot. But, you know, it's very important, and that'll be the base of our information as far as the routing we're taking and land use, and, I mean, that's, that's grave one, what we need to do.
Motion made by Bob to approve the contract, sorry. Here, second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Mary Ann. Any further discussion?
No, I'm just glad to get this project underway, and it's been on the table for too many years, and I think we've got a great team to go forward.
No further discussion? Then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Okay, did we finish? We did through everything, didn't we?
Yep.
All right, item number ten E, the closed session in accordance with GS one forty-three.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you very much. We're going to do you a top-notch job.
Thank you, Harlow.
I appreciate you, all the business that you give us.
If you don't, you owe us a refund.
Be ready.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Brian. Okay, there's a motion, I mean, to go into closed session in accordance with GS one forty-three dash three eighteen dash eleven, A-six, for the purpose of discussion, discussing personnel matters concerning appointment of an interim town manager. And, secondly, in accordance with GS one forty-three, three eighteen dot eleven dash A-three, for attorney-client privilege to discuss litigation between the town of Lake Lor and Izabard Self Jones et al.
I'll make it.
Motion made by Stephen, second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Take a break.